Here, the band is back together as it were. And it's good to have everyone here live and in person. We have, first of course, of our order of business is the invocation followed by a pledge of allegiance. Madam Mayor-elect, if you will.
To our wonderful Creator, we've come before you this beautiful day to give you the honor for allowing us to see this day. We ask you to please be within this meeting. We ask that you will guide us with your wisdom, with your knowledge, and with your vision. Because each one of our hearts deserve and desire to do what's best for this great city. So we ask that you have your way, that the end result would be the result that is best for this city. That this city may grow and prosper and be a good neighbor to all neighbors, but most of all be a shining light within this nation. You're welcome into this meeting. And as we prepare for this meeting in November, I ask that as we as a council, we be prepared to go various ways with our careers and with our lives. I ask that you watch over and protect each and every one of us. And I pray that you smile upon this service that has been rendered by each one of these council members. Guide them continuously with your life through their lives, that they may continue to serve, to help others. It is in your name that we do pray. Amen.
Our pledge allegiance to the life of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands. One nation, united by God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Thank you, Madam Mayor-elect. I know that some of you, Octavia is my last pick, but maybe prone to being emotional today. But let me say, it was only one loss. We're likely to be in the playoffs. It's just, it was a top 14 and we'll get past this. We'll pass this together. We have, it is incumbent upon me to recognize the successful efforts of two of our membership, albeit somewhat bittersweet with regard to the mayor pro temp. Let me first say to Mayor Pro Tem Brand, congratulations on your election to become a council. I know I will and we will all miss Buddy here, but we know that his time at the county will be well spent. And that will bring our two organizations even further together. And let me, let me say too, and maybe this is a little bit out of order, but it's notable, I think, that for a decade, this council had one Republican member and he was our pro temp. I think that's a statement about this council and this community and how we have operated and how I know we'll operate going forward. That's because this council did not look at Buddy Brand as a Republican or a representative of a district. They looked at Buddy Brand as a trusted friend and counselor. And his voice is so important to the city moving forward. So thank you, Buddy. And to the mayor-elect, congratulations on your election. We all know that given your history and your time and your experience on this council, that this council will be well-served going forward. And we're all very excited to see what that brings. Teresa, and I know that we have with us here in the audience two council members-elect. Councilwoman Barnes, congratulations and welcome here today. And Councilman McCall, congratulations. And y'all will be in the hot seat come next month and so the rest of us will. Indeed, a little bit of housekeeping, as I understand, and for those of you at home, so you understand, a little bit different than your regular countywide or statewide races, which take office in January following elections in November. Municipal offices take office a little bit early. And indeed, the vacancy created by Councilman Brand's departure will be accelerated as well. Because I understand he's filling the unexpired term of Councilman Schofield. This will be Buddy's last meeting. Then it will also be the last meeting with myself and Octavia and Glenn. And so swearing in, a city will occur, I think Thursday. And then the new council will be seated in December with two vacancies to be filled. And so, that's pretty quick. Teresa tried to negotiate the delay to have a little bit more time to acclimate. We couldn't accomplish that. And so, that's, that's what will occur. So this will be our last meeting as a group. And we'll talk a little bit about that in a little bit. But let me also add, normally, and I think state law requires that the, given Buddy's vacancy, that the pro temp seat is filled immediately after your election. That seems, although that's what the state law says, it seems absurd to me, given the fact that this, this collection here is going to be gone come December. And so even though that's what state law calls for, you will see that the election to break him is not on your agenda. Because it doesn't make any sense to me, and I don't think the staff that this council elects to break him out of our membership when we know that new members are going to be coming in. And so unless there's objection, I'd like to defer that formally. And that will be taken up by the next council when the full proclamation occurs. Very well. Next matter then for our agenda is the approval of the minutes. We have a four, it's the October 12th, 2020, right on meeting, is there a motion? There's a motion by the pro temp second by Councilwoman Barnes and about Mayor-elect. I see, I've already done it. I see, woman more.
Steve, you got the weight.
I know, I got the weight. Very well. There's been a motion in second. All in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Both lights on, very well. Minutes are proceeding unanimously. Councilwoman Barnes has her first vote, even though she's not on. Next matter for our consideration is ordinances in possession, first being 2020-36 for a second reading. Orange Annex Property owned by The Grove and Eddens LLC. Specifically, a 17-acre portion of tax map number 00075-01-221, is there a motion? Two motion by the pro temp second by Councilwoman Moore, discussion. Hearing none, all fair, but no people saying aye. And the both are lights on, measure passing unanimously. Next matter for our considerations, introduction of ordinances. First is 2020-37 for a first reading, ordinance to grant Florence County permanent right-of-way easement on Dorgan Street for the construction of the sidewalk. Mr. Davis is perishing podium to give us some information on that. Is there a motion second so we can hear from him? Second, there's a motion second. Mr. Davis.
Mr. Mayor-elect of the council, we've received a request from Florence County to grant a permanent easement from property that's owned by the city. That property is 9100-13-0110. That's 706 Dorgan Street. The county is planning to construct the sidewalk on that property, all of Dorgan. They're asking for a right-of-way of five feet wide, about 50 feet, which is the length of that property. There's nothing on the property now, vacant land. And if by chance, they, they aren't able to develop the sidewalk, that easement will come back to the city. So we will have a revert of laws on it.
Very well, thank you, Mr. Davis. A motion second, discussion. Hearing none, all fair, but no people saying aye. Those are lights on, measure passing unanimously. Thank you, Mr. Davis. Next bill is 2020-38 for first reading, Orange Annex and Zone 2 acre on Jody Road. Tax map numbers 0012301052. There's a motion. We have Blake and the mayor-elect is. Mr. Dudley, what say you?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is property located along West Arlington and Jody Road. The area, and I'll link in a bit, the area in the kind of yellowish color there is the, are the proposed parcels for annexation. The larger portions there will be the future site of a fire station. So, and then the 10-foot strip is provided continuity for the annexation. The proposed zoning is activity center. In this case, it is, it's not in agreement with the future land use plan. But Planning Commission did recommend it because it was proposed as industrial. But this area over since the time our future land was adopted has developed out with more as a commercial character as opposed to industrial character. So this is fitting with the character of the area. And here are a few pictures of the area. It's currently vacant area, ball fields and adjacent property, I believe is a veteran area. And this concludes that.
Thank you, Mr. Dudley. Question, one question. What are the size of the building itself? Will it be pretty much what's like out there, the South Lawrence Fire Station?
It'll be very similar in size.
How many employees will be here at that?
Will be 12, will be 12 employees inside of that fire station.
And the fire equipment is?
That is the, that is the existing employees and equipment. That, the West Palm Street Fire Station, that group will move to the Jody Road.
Okay.
And then the fifth road station.
Very well, motion second. Any further discussion? All fair, please indicate by saying aye. Those are lights on. Very well. Wouldn't do for our fire station not to be in the city. Next matter for our consideration is bill 2020-39 for a first reading, Orange Annex and Zone 3553 Texas Road. Identify the tax map number 00741-01-007, as well as 695 Florida Drive. Tax map number 00741-01-008, is there a motion? Second by the pro temp, second by Councilwoman Dudley.
Thank you. These are two lots that are characterized by single-family detached development in the Oak Forest subdivision off of the South Borough Road area. Here's a closer view showing the two single-family structures. The proposed zoning is NC 6.1, which is in agreement with future land use plan, as well as other single-family homes within the vicinity. And here are a couple of photographs of the property. And Planning Commission did that unanimously for the zone. And this concludes that.
Questions? This, Mr. Dudley, this property is awfully low in places, is it not?
There are some stormwater concerns. I know across the road, there are some rear yards.
Well, members, I, you know, this has been recommended by the Planning Commission. This meets our requirement as a matter of legality and form. Although I will note that, you know, we've had this problem in the past where folks come in. They're in low-lying areas, there are underlying stormwater issues. They come in. And then they, shockingly, have flooding problems. And then, then, then we get complaints about the fact that they have flooding problems. So while I, my sense is, I'm inclined to support this. We do need to make sure these folks understand that this, this stormwater history in this area is an issue. And it's not an issue that's going to be resolved by the city by virtue of this annexation. Any other view on this, or you all think I see this incorrectly? Very well, given that, there's been a motion in second, all in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Those lights on. Measure passing unanimously. Next matter for our consideration is bill 2020-40 for a first reading. Orange Annex and Zone 234 Shenandoah Lane, tax map 90113-01-120. There's a motion second. There's been motions in second, Mr. Dudley.
Thank you. This is another single-family detached annexation in the Spalding Heights subdivision. It is in the vicinity of North Irving Street and Sam Harrell Road. Here's a closer view of the parcel and its location is kind of in the rear of the subdivision there. The proposed zoning is NC 6.1, which is in agreement with future land use plan. And the zoning was supported unanimously by the Planning Commission. And here is a view of the property. And this concludes that.
Very well, it's been motion second, discussion. Hearing none, all fair, please indicate by saying aye. Those are lights on. Measure passing unanimously. Next bill is 2020-41 for first reading, ordinance to rezone from NC 15 to NC 10. Parcel located on Marion Avenue, tax map number 90067-03-014, is there a motion? The motion to agree. Your elect in second by Councilwoman Moore.
Thank you. This property is located on Marion Avenue. It's off of Second Loop Road. It's at the, I guess, the northern end of Marion Avenue and borders Jeffries Creek in this vicinity. The, here's a closer look at the parcel. As you can see, it's quite a large parcel. It's almost two acres and it does border Jeffries Creek to the north. The surrounding zoning is currently zoned the NC 15, which is a single-family large lot. It is surrounded by NC 15 as well as open space and recreation. The surrounding property is zoned open space because of its proximity to Jeffries Creek. And the proposed zoning is NC 10, which still supports the single-family detached use. It just allows for smaller development or, I'm sorry, smaller lots. The reason for the request is because, and I can go to the floodplain here to show you more closely. But it does have quite a bit of floodplain associated with the lot. As you can see, half of the lot is in the floodway and probably three-quarters, you know, the two-thirds of the lot is within the floodplain. So the owner of the lot is wanting to subdivide it such that two lots can be created that are entirely outside of the floodplain, so those homes would not be subject to floodplain regulation. And then that would allow for a larger lot to the rear, which may support limited development within the floodplain, but would be subject to floodplain regulation. So the ultimate goal was to divide it into three lots. The light blue area there is a 100-year floodway. That's where limited development is allowed. And then in the dark blue area, that is the floodway. And there's no development that would ever be allowed in that area, under current, I guess, under current floodplain regulation. And Planning Commission did unanimously recommend this zone.
Questions from Councilwoman.
So is there currently a structure on the lot?
There's certainly no structure on the lot.
He wants to subdivide it so we can put two structures.
That's correct. Okay.
Where's the access for, once you divide that, I can see the access to the front part of the lot. But where's the access coming in for the second half of the lot? I can't see.
Yeah, this.
Does it run down the side of the lot?
The second.
Yeah.
It would be subdivided right here. So there would be, the end of the road runs to about right here where that line is. So there would be access for two lots there.
You got better eyes than I can. Coming through. The concern with the flooding, as was mentioned in the other lot.
Worse example than that one.
This is flooding and, you know, if you want to go back to that 100-year mark, I'm going to tell you, that's optimal. When Matthew came, I mean, Jeffries Creek was, you know, up into West Hurry Drive. And I'm sure all of this area was absolutely underwater, maybe about five foot underwater. So I have a real concern about the logistics of how this is going to play out. I hear what you're saying, but I'm having a difficult time understanding. If that area in dark blue, you cannot build a structure. You cannot build a structure. Okay. Are you saying then that the, this lot is going to be divided in three such that the area in dark blue is going to be its own separate lot on which nothing can be built? Is that what you're telling us?
The proposal is.
I mean, is that?
There would be one lot that would be subdivided about right here. And another one about right here. So there would be two lots here and here with the remainder from kind of this, where the 100-year floodplains start all the way to the back, where it would be the third lot.
So where, if any structure could be built on that third lot as you've identified it, where would that location of a structure be?
It would have to be in the light blue portion, which is part of the 100-year floodplain. But it would have to be constructed such that it's at least one foot above base flood elevation. And there's also a repairing buffer of approximately 20 feet or exactly 20 feet outside of the floodway that they could not develop. So it would have to be, if they do develop on it, it would have to be pushed as far south as possible.
And, and what, let's assume that that goes forward and let's assume the first two lots are built and you have structures there, and now they want to build on the third lot. Do they have to come to the city to get a building permit so that the city will know exactly where on that lot the structure is going?
They do. They absolutely do. And they have to, there's further regulation. They would have to provide a flat showing where the 100-year floodplain is in relation to the home. And they would have to provide an elevation certificate, which is a FEMA document showing that it's to be constructed at least one foot above the base flood elevation.
And the city would be reviewing all of that prior to issuing a building permit?
That's correct. Prior to and at the end of construction, it has to be verified.
All right. I've got two, are you, you've got a couple of members who are actually speaking as well. I just want to clarify for everybody. The previous application we had was an annexation where I showed some concern about the fact that this is an area that has had some stormwater. This one is even more dramatic.
This is massive to them.
As Councilman Bailey has pointed out, where actually a portion of the lot is in the floodway. A portion of the lot is in the floodplain. And then a portion of the lot, if it's subdivided as they request, is outside the floodplain. But as Councilman Bailey has pointed out, it's not far outside. And the rains we've seen haven't really honored that, that floodplain boundary marker. And in order for us to adopt this, we have to, although it's already added, this, this is property already in the city.
That's correct.
But we, we're being asked to approve the subdivision of the lots and the rezoning from NC 15 to NC 10.
That's correct.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Dudley. Madam Mayor-elect.
My question would be, it's already in the city. And we know that in a dark blue zone, they cannot build a lot, correct?
That's correct.
So this probably have to come from, what is the purpose of them requesting to have this zoning place on the property they cannot use?
The, the smaller lot size would allow them to get two lots that are completely outside of the flood, the floodway, you know, the floodplain. And whenever houses are outside of the floodway, then they don't have to get flooded. So it ultimately helps the homeowner, you know, I guess, you know, with the possible cost associated with homeownership. And even if they do choose to get homeowners insurance, if they are outside of the floodway, or I mean, a flood insurance, because they are outside of the floodway, they get a preferred rate. So, you know, it's like any of us in this room here outside of the floodway. We could, or the flood zone, we could still get flood insurance at a preferred rate. So it does help the homeowner. But there is the chance, and I'm not sure of the developer's intent, been unclear on that. That, that third lot, man, that larger, larger lot could be built.
And that is my concern is that, that blue script. We know legally what the boundaries are. My concern is if they subdivide it into three lots, that last lot that will be in that light blue area will have that blue script in there with that homeowner thinking they've got that property so forth, which is going to increase flooding. And by us doing this with the city, it's going to come back, they're looking at us. So my concern is that dot area, that dot blue, that is the major concern for me.
That was actually my concern also. Because if we approve this, it could come back to bite us later on. If there's a flood, then they'll come back to us saying that we need to do something about stormwater and all kinds of things like what happens now in certain neighborhoods. So I'm not sure if we should take that chance, especially that third lot. Because even the first two could possibly flood, but that third one is very probable that it would.
Yes, Jerry, I know that the stormwater issues through Jeffries Creek and this whole area are going to be part of the new facility that's going to be going out to Tinsville and the sewer facilities and all. And that's been, along West Hurry Drive, that's currently a very big issue. And I know the city recently had purchased property that had that over there near Park Avenue on the other side of Jeffries Creek. Is that, are those same issues present on the south side of Jeffries Creek as they are on the north side of Jeffries Creek? I guess, Mr. Hemingway would be the.
Yeah, that's who I'm eyeing right now.
Welcome to.
Currently at the moment, it's not an issue, but if this gets developed, then we have to look real close at the elevation and take a closer look and make sure. But that increased probability of them having sewer service issues based on being built in that particular location. Because those elevations are a lot lower. So they would have to either elevate the houses extremely high to avoid that particular situation.
So the concern I have is, is the, you know, the stormwater and the sewer.
Correct.
And how those work. And if you would have difficulty with sewer service, you know, if you brought that into particularly that third lot. Are you, are you saying the first two lots heading north, that those two lots would be fine in terms of sewer service?
Not necessarily. We have to look at the elevation of the current sewer inflight and the elevation of the house once they're constructed to make sure those elevations are higher than the current sewer elevation based on the last significant rain event.
Is there, I mean, I, I'm not a builder, but it seems to me that you'd want to know the sewer issue first before you build. You want to be sure that you can get sewer service. Is that something that could be, is that something that your office can consult with the owner on to try to get that answered for us ahead of time? So that everybody would know, is sewer service something that is compatible with development on those lots or not?
Yes, I recall, look, go ahead and get measurements on our current elevation. And then get the developer on what elevation they would decide to build a project the houses on.
Okay, under those circumstances, I'd move that we defer so that we give Michael time to have his office meet with the owner to make sure that sewer service is capable and available for any kind of construction.
Well, I, I tend to agree with you, Councilman. And for those at home who don't understand the shorthand we're speaking up here somewhat. There's, there's two sets of concerns that have been expressed by council here. What we're looking at is a relatively large lot that extends from an area that is in the floodway that we know floods and is not, not amenable to any kind of construction. That's a portion of the existing lot. Second portion of the existing lot is in the floodplain, which floods regularly and is within what we call the 100-year boundary. Of course, although we know that what, what we used to think happened once every 100 years has been happening quite more regularly than that. And then the third area where I think they intend to put two parcels that is completely out of both the floodplain and the floodway. Although, as has been identified by members today, even though technically it's out of that 100-year area, it's still subject to flooding and still subject to stormwater issues, the kinds of stormwater issues that we see when folks come in here who are homeowners, who have purchased lots in areas like this. Those purchase lots in areas like this and look to the city to solve. Uh, flooding issues they have in their home, that that's one set of concerns. And we've been parsing out those concerns that they apply to these different areas in this one lot. Then there's another set of concerns that Councilman Javale is right, which is. There's a storm, uh, uh, I'm sorry, a sewer line that runs through Jeffers. Uh, it runs through Jeffers Creek because it was put there whenever those lines were at set back to probably over fifty, sixty years ago, maybe more than that.
Yes, sir.
Uh, because it's a low point. Uh, but as the water levels in Jeffers Creek have risen, whether because of beavers or because of uh, storms and flooding. Uh, we've seen intrusion into our stormwater lines, which have to be permeable to allow oxygen into them to function correctly. That has resulted in so-called surcharging. Where waste is 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 surcharged back into Jeffers Creek and that's created a lot of problems for us, for our system. Uh, and hopefully that whole issue will be addressed significantly. By us withdrawing a lot of the sewer that runs through that line. And diverting it to a completely other sewer state uh, treatment facility that we hope to build on the west side of town. Albeit an extremely expensive fix. Uh, one in the neighborhood could have tens of millions of dollars. Uh, that will take many, many years.
Correct.
Councilman Javale is concerned that the development of this kind of lot. Might not be amenable to the use of that sewer service because of the elevation.
As it currently.
As it currently exists. Uh, and even if it does, by the way, it will still certainly contribute to the amount of sewage that's traveling through that line. And then the subject of surcharging and it might surcharge onto this line and be parked. Um, so much so that we have had in other areas around Jeffers Creek to address that by purchasing property. That have become uh, not desirable because of that problem. Um, those are, those are two separate sets of concerns that this council is wrestling with. Uh, if if indeed because of the elevations. The uh, access to sewer there would become financially impossible or untenable. That might, that might make the whole, whole discussion quite a difficult one. And so the motion.
And I'm second, I second.
A motion, a motion that Councilman Javale has made and second by Councilman Gibson Hallmore. Is to allow staff to to run some of those levels to tell us about what that sewer service would be like. If it was even tenable, the reality being that even if that is the case and sewer service is available, there are those concerns about the service on that land. And they're all still the flooding concern. I recognize that this is a. This is a a change that's been approved by. Um, and and meets the legal parameters of, of by and large. Uh, of our zoning law. But with there are concerns that this council has to address that go beyond that. They were reflected a little bit in that earlier annexation that we accepted, outstanding concern, this one is even of a higher level.
And I would also add that this is information that the the owner of the property would need to know anyway. So it's kind of getting that information before, it's not only for council, but also for the property.
Staff, is that a, is that a approach that's a tenable one for y'all's perspective on what it is?
Yes, sir.
Alright, so there's been a motion to defer in a second, any further discussion about that? Hearing none in all papers, any people saying aye?
Aye.
Those like sign, that matter has been deferred as indicated in the discussion. Next matter for our consideration is reduction of resolutions, resolution twenty twenty dash twenty one. Uh, pursuant to section one, two, and three of ordinance twenty twenty dash twenty eight to extend the emergency term and application of said ordinance by an additional sixty days. Some motion by Councilman Moore, second by the mayor elect, any discussion? Hearing none, all papers, any people saying aye? Those like sign, very well, may or pass the unanimously. Next matter is resolution twenty twenty dash twenty two, designating Friday, December fourth, twenty twenty as Arbor Day for the city of Florence. There's a motion by the mayor elect, second by Council Wilson, Councilman Moore. Any discussion? Hearing none, all papers, any people saying aye? Those like sign, measure passes unanimously, next matter is resolution twenty twenty dash twenty three. To adopt the COVID nineteen CARES Act budget for three, uh, three hundred and twelve dollars and. I'm sorry, three hundred and twelve, three hundred and thirty one dollars. Uh, to make presentation on that matter, Dudley, the year before, it's a motion by the mayor elect and second by Councilman Moore, Mr. Dudley.
Uh, thank you. And uh. The CARES Act was a adopted or um, announced by the president on March twenty seventh, it's a two trillion dollar aid package. Uh, that provides financial aid to families and businesses impacted by COVID nineteen. And then on May eleventh, twenty twenty, the first round of these funds were, are local funds. Uh, were adopted by city council totaling a hundred and sixty one thousand, two hundred and sixty three dollars for fiscal year twenty twenty one. Um, on September eleventh, twenty twenty, um, an additional three hundred and twelve thousand, three hundred and thirty one dollars. Um, were announced um, to be added to this total. Some that is available to the city of Florence. And it's uh, earmarked to assist low, moderate income citizens whose jobs or incomes have been affected by the COVID nineteen pandemic. So we are here, we have proposed. Um, a budget for these, they've considered the third round fund, um, of the CARES Act. And the funds will provide additional uh, monies to provide direct access or direct services to your residents and for grant mortgages, utility assistance. Uh, to eligible clients with cap, with caps of five hundred dollars for rent or mortgages, two hundred and fifty for utilities, and this aid would be available to. Um, individuals for up to six months. Uh, funding would also be provided for food pantries and meal centers to combat. Hunger and food insecurity due to the pandemic. And the proposed budget, uh, which is also outlined in the ordinance. Would be a hundred and twelve thousand, three hundred and thirty one dollars to Lighthouse Ministries. And then fifty thousand dollars each um, to some of our food pantries and meal centers to include Harvest Food Bank, Mano House, Meals on Wheels, and my brother's Super Shelter.
Councilman. Is there an accounting that, um, anytime you get federal money, you always, the city always asks to report back. Uh, I know it's done that with FEMA and all the hurricane money and you have this long detailed accounting that has to be done at the back end. And with us approving money on the front end, what accounting do we receive from these entities? So that in turn, we can report back to the federal government?
We, we first on the, first on the front end, we do um, have a public hearing regarding the money, ready public, and that was held on November the fourth. And the. The entities that are, we're giving the money, they're giving the funds to provide um, justification for these funds, funds on the front end, and those have already been provided. So we generally know what the the funds are going to be spent on. And then they turn into us. Um, line items, receipts, all related to COVID activities based on those justifications. And we then in turn keep those and we actually file for reimbursement of these funds through um, the CARES Act, the federal government.
So the city fronts this money and then the city submits a. Um, a voucher to the federal government to get reimbursed those? Is that what you're saying?
We reimburse them, um, we, they spend the money. We then reimburse them and then we seek reimbursement from the federal government.
So each and one of these entities spends their own money first?
That's correct.
And then the city reimburses them out of the money that they already have and that we're paying them. And then after the city has reimbursed these entities, then the city seeks reimbursement back from the federal government?
That's correct.
Okay.
And that's why it all has to be documented.
Well, that was, I knew that was the case, but I just wanted to make sure we were clear on the process.
Yes.
Thank you.
Councilman Wilson, Councilman Moore, guys to be recognized.
Absolutely.
Um, for these entities, for each one of these entities, I can say. That I have called each and every one from time to time to help someone. And they have been really willing and went able to do it. Um, and I really support them. Each and everyone on here, they're great, all of them are great group, then, yeah, I really support this for each and every.
Well, thank you, we agree as well.
Hey, Councilman, Councilman.
I certainly support this. Just a sidebar question. When each entity sends you an accounting, will it be a review of that accounting to be sure the money is spent appropriately under the federal grant?
Yes, it is.
Thank you.
And and if we have any questions, we have a federal representative, we can bounce things off of.
Thank you, very supportive, thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Wilson, further discussion? Hearing none, there's been a motion, second, all papers, any people saying aye? Those like sign, this passes unanimously.
Mr. Mayor has a. Uh, it's not on the agenda, but historically this time of year, we always do an extra day for Christmas. Uh, that we grant to city employees and so I would uh, ask. Uh, if we could amend the the agenda to add that so that we can go ahead and vote on that.
I second that motion.
The unanimous consent of the agenda for that purpose? Without objections amended for that purpose, the motion by Councilman Javale is taken. Uh, I assume there's. Councilwoman.
Thank you, thanks, last year, forgetting if I'm wrong, but we, right, that we requested that we look at making that an annual holiday, so we won't have to go through this. Every year, so I would request of the staff, depending after this, that we look at making that an annual. Extra day for Christmas.
I'd say you can say no.
Well, obviously, it's it's too late to do it for this year, so we. Would be more happy to consider the the temporary and uh, we'll have something back to you by first of the year.
Well. I think we voted last year to make it permanent, an extra day.
I don't believe we did. I don't believe, I I believe there was discussion, but I don't believe there's ever.
Very well. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, uh, this is a motion, so any further discussion? Hearing none, all papers, any people saying aye? Next matter of our consideration, reports, Mr. Boards and Commissions. Uh, there are uh, two that fall to our mayor elect, Urban, and one that falls to myself, first is the design review board. Madam Mayor, look.
I'm going to decide.
Very well, I will defer my appointment as well, and I think there's not been an application for mine. I hope she will apply and that uh, the the next council can take that one up. Um, is there also, uh, as to the housing authority board, I think, I think falls to. Uh, Mayor like, what say you?
Um, we have an application for Chipper Smith. Mark Smith.
Council.
I'll let to your point, Mr. Smith.
Very well, there's been a motion, any second? Very well, I'll second, any discussion? Hearing none, any objection? Hearing none, appointments confirmed, thank you, Mr. Mayor elect. Uh, next. The next. Matter of our consideration then. Is executive session. Is there a motion we retire to executive session? Thank you, there is a motion, second, before we go, let me make sure for the purpose of the premium information that this is. Thirty dash four dash seventy seven eight two to discuss negotiations presented to the post-contractual ring. Motion second, you get.
Executive session from staff regarding the application of several different uh, grant applications. Uh, and for those of you who, and for for the new membership here with us, what you are not able to see that we have up here. Is the analysis and the scoring system that is applied uh, for each application. There is a, the council of having adopted this grant mechanism several years ago now. Uh, allows for grants for downtown businesses uh, under a certain threshold of investment, as as you know. There are those uh, grants that are available upon action of council over, I think, two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Uh, but there's also grants that are for investments that are under two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, and we've created a mechanism. That has a very specific and precise scoring system for those applications. Those, those applications are reviewed by staff and the scores then are presented to council for council's action. Each of those grant application receives scores that justify the granting of the grants requested. And it was my motion that this time that we uh, adopting and convey all those grants.
So move.
There's a motion, second, very well, any discussion? Hearing none, all papers, any people saying aye? Opposed like sign, very well, then, uh, that motion passes. Um, that before we adjourn, there are uh, some presentations that are incumbent upon me to make here. Uh, before the adjournment of this session, however, uh, Council Wilson has to be recognized, and so you recognize, Council.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council. Since I will be leaving council this week, I want to share with you. How it's been such a reward to work with you, each of you, and to see the success we've seen. First of all, and most important, I want to acknowledge my Lord and Savior, Jesus Christ, in my life. That has impacted all that I have done throughout my life, and as I've become older, it much more has impacted me. I want to thank my wife Sandra and my family. From the beginning, these eight years, my wife has been beside me and been been working with me. In meetings with communities and in events that we tend both in the city and out of the city. And she and my family are the, the root of success, what little I've had to achieve what I've achieved. I want to next thank the forty neighborhood watch groups throughout the city. Folks, you in those neighborhood watch groups are the core of quality of life in each one of these neighborhoods. I worked with you when I was on planning commission, I've worked with you on city council during two, two terms. And I want to give you thumbs up because you set the standard. I'll again say this, you set the standard of what you want to see in quality of life and experiences of families in your neighborhoods. And this city, through its different departments, have heard you. The police department has uh, community affairs people, community watch people, officers that work with these uh, neighborhood watch uh, committees. And they report back to the chief of police. And if it's a criminal matter and you have put it up front, let me tell you, the city of Florence addresses that, I've seen it firsthand and it works. Chief Heiler, thank you, it's meant a lot to me and it means more, I'm sure, to the people that live in these neighborhoods. Next, I want to thank the citizens throughout the city to volunteer, to volunteer to make our city. At the best it can be and to improve the quality of life. Those volunteers are are very well appreciated by me and the city council, I'm sure. Because you're doing behind the scenes work to bring Florence as one. City management, department heads and all city employees, I can't say too much. I can't, I can't complete my total sentence of how I feel about working with each of you. You have made my abilities, which limited they are. To, to achieve success, not for Glenn Willis, but for our citizens, I've tried to be an advocate for them. And our department heads, our city employees, my hats go off to you. You are where the rubber meets the road and and I like to tell our city employees. No matter what department they work in, you are why we're the great city that we are, the hub of the PD. Next offices of the Florence Police Department and Fire Departments. Let me tell you, folks, these are very special people. Most of us, when we see danger, we're running away, these folks run into danger. And I can't say too much about, about these departments. Chief Heiler and a fire chief, we appreciate you, we thank you for all that you do and you have done. It's a, it's been a awarding uh, trip to see. Uh, you step up to the plate when the emergencies occur and and things need to be done. It's been a pleasure to work with Mayor Wakila and this council. When I look back and and I asked staff to do a little study of the last four years. And I, and and let me say this. It was very impressive for what this city council have achieved. It was very impressive for what this city council have achieved. And again, let me say this, what this city council has achieved. What I saw in the last four years, in the first four years, was a, a council led by a mayor that brought people together. Sometimes we didn't agree. But most of the time, when we sat down at the table, instead of pushing away from that table, we as a council pushed closer. And we learned to listen to others. And that has been a, a major factor, I think, in success of this city. When you have a group of people that get along and work together, things can be achieved much, much better in a more cohesive way than people arguing and, and attacking each other. And, and I have been blessed to serve with a group of people that sometimes don't agree with me, and I don't agree with them. But we have listened to each other and we respect each other's opinions and we understand that th- these decisions aren't made about politics. They are not, I'll say this again, these decisions aren't made about politics. These decisions are made about what's in the best interest of the people of Florence. And I want to acknowledge each one of you and thank you for what you've done and, and working with me. And last, to the people of the city of Florence. It's been an honor and pleasure to serve these two terms on council, and I will miss my interactions with you throughout this city. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to serve and, and represent you. It has been an awesome trip for me and God bless you and thank you again. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Council.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Councilman Willis, for your words. Uh, I know that sentiments are shared uh with regard to you by each member of this council.
Thank you, sir.
Um, it, it, it falls to me now uh to make these plot presentations, so for that purpose, I'm told I'm to come down from the deers.
That's what they tell me. Like you, I'm following directions.
Councilman Willis, you. I, I know we're not supposed to go in.
All right, I'm, I'm very appreciative. Yes, sir.
It is, uh, it is with my great honor uh and a, a, a enormous amount of respect and friendship and a good deal of, of sadness uh that I uh present and recognition of, and appreciation of uh his retirement and his years of dedicated service to Florence community. Uh, this service award to Councilman Glenn Willis, at-large member of the city of Florence council.
Thank you.
Congratulations. Councilwoman, Octavia Williams Bullock. I tell you now, we're elected together in two thousand eight. And uh I know without question, there was more than one occasion that I grew her flat first. Uh, but we've been through this, this journey together here for twelve years. Uh, and I, I can't imagine a better friend and, and partner to go through this without taking it. Uh, so it is with uh great honor uh that I present the service award to my dear friend, Councilwoman Octavia Williams Bullock, who was the first African American elected at large to the city of Florence. The first woman elected uh to the city of Florence in probably decades before she was elected.
Fifty five years.
Fifty five years. And I, and I will point out that h- having charted that path, uh we now have two African American members who've been elected at large are with us today. We have two other uh female African American members, one of which has just been elected mayor. Uh, Councilwoman, thank you for the, for the example you have said, and thank you for what you've done for this community.
I did have some comments, I'm gonna I wrote it down because one of the things my um husband told me when I was elected in two thousand eight is I better never let them, let, I've, you better never let them make you cry. So I wrote my comments down, so hopefully that will keep me from shedding any tears. Um, and I'm gonna reiterate some of the things that Mayor Wakila said because I do think it's, it's really important and historical for our city. So Mayor and Council, thank you for allowing me this opportunity to express my thanks and gratitude to each of you for your friendship, to the wonderful city staff, for your guidance, and most of all, to the citizens of the city of Florence. Twelve years ago this month, the voters trusted me to become the first African American to win an at-large seat in the city of Florence and the first woman elected since nineteen fifty-three. I'm so proud to leave office knowing we progressed even further and twelve years later, our great city has made history again with the election of two African American at-large members and our first female and first African American mayor. Congratulations. We all stand on the shoulders of the African Americans who came before us, including Mr. Billy D. Williams and the late Ed Robinson. I am thankful to have been a part of the team for twelve years that can check off many successes. I am most proud of our numerous examples of Democrats and Republicans working together to get things done, including our revitalized downtown, our new athletic facilities and our smoke-free ordinance back in two thousand twelve, just to name a few. For my entire time on council, I have served with Mayor Wakila and Councilman Buddy Brand. They have both become not only my fellow council members, but trusted friends. I don't think it's a secret that the mayor can be a little to the left and Buddy can be a little to the right. And so many times I found myself right in the middle. Fortunately, that made for a perfect recipe for getting things done. The Greek philosopher Aristotle said, in order to be a great leader, you must first learn how to follow. The author John Maxwell advises, real leadership is the be, is being the person others will gladly and confidently follow. Mayor, I want to say a special thank you for being the type of leader that we could follow for twelve years. It is because of your leadership and your steadfast guidance that we can leave with integrity and the peace of mind that we accomplish what we said we would. In closing, I want to again give the highest thanks to the voters who elected me three times to be of service to them. There is a saying that the first rule of positivity is no matter where you go, the place should be a little better than when you leave. And I hope I have done that for the city of Florence.
Mayor. There's still time. Mayor for Tim Buddy Brain. Now, if somebody had told me twelve years ago that one of my closest friends and confidants and advisors was going to be this staunch Republican from the country club, far to the right, and I thought they were crazy. Um, but a- as I think all you know, and hopefully the community knows, um Buddy and I are the closest of friends. And I feel that the decisions that we have made as a council uh have been better because of the, of the, of the tension uh that exists because of our different perspective. That is a tension that uh involves perspectives that are different from our own with each other, but that we both respect. And I think has generated a, a much better result. So Buddy, it is um, it is with sadness for you leaving the city, but with hope, uh as you join the county, that I'm honored here today to present the service award to Frank J. Buddy Brand in recognition and appreciation of his years of dedicated service to the city of Florence from May of two thousand five until November two thousand.
I'm not elegant and I'm not baby, I'm three, matter of fact, it's the way I hear y'all doing high and I'm gonna sit around and but um the first couple of months, I was on city council, I made a lot of conversations. Don, I didn't see a bodyguard because I thought killing. I did learn a little bit more about louder schools with water. Nicely, the, the, Jim Peterson, he helped me out some and, and drink beer a little bit and I was calm down. I will tell you that the service here, um I'm probably be working with not just the council that we have, but all of these. I mean, I've learned an awful lot about city government. I've also learned more about people. I've learned that if I keep my mouth shut, I do a lot better. But um Stephen and I have uh started out here, the left and the right. We ended up here, and that's true of all the council members, I believe, that's why this city has worked as well as it has because of our leader, and that's a big deal. So before I go on and get upset here, um let me, uh, because I am fifteen years of this, it is a long time. Um, I thought I might try to beat Ed Robinson's record, but I'm going to the county, so I might be around a while longer. I had a uh presentation made on me at the time, appreciate the opportunity to do this. And the reason I wrote it down is that I didn't want to forget something. First of all, Stephen, he came to Florence a lot wet or this guy a lot wet behind me, I'll never forget this, and Stephen, I told him about five or ten times, he ran early on against Cleveland. And I was out working in my backyard, right down near the upper street, and he comes fresh, about like that on a Saturday afternoon, the fiber cables outside. And I was in the shorts and I wasn't on campus, like, fine, okay. Anyway, and he answered, I said, well, I'm not the guard, or you know, the problem. And uh, he said, I said, what do you do? He said, well, I just wanted to introduce myself, I'm Stephen Keeler, I'm really good at running for his state. I said, fun, you have lost your mind. Anyway, he didn't win that, but he poured over the hearts and of everybody and all of a sudden, it's boring. Um, I want to thank his father for allowing him to take times, because I'm guaranteeing I've been a financial bank. Also Laura and her boys, they have given up a lot of time for Stephen to do what he's done. Glenn pointed this out, uh, a good leader listens to others. There've been many times right there that I have heard all kind of junk from the people have an issue, and he held his, he held his temper, he did a great job, and he listened, and he got results. He has compassion for our city. Not just our city, he's got a compassion for the region. He's on all kinds of working conditions. He has the willingness and ability to bring things together from variety of sources, whether the North Florence, East Florence, West Florence, South Florence, it doesn't matter where. He brings people together, the Bruce Lee Foundation, Francis Mary, think about what has happened downtown with the Bruce Lee Foundation and this connection to Francis Mary College. He values our community and its citizens. And just to say this, David McKee has done an outstanding job in our community, and there's a couple of the the people up there on, we have uh paintings of David McLeod and hey Ford. I think he's a great combination of both of those people, without a doubt. But for me, he's my mayor, and he's made a big better person because he's my mayor.
I'm not gonna say anyone. No, I'll say you here. I was just gonna slip out, but. Thank you, guys. I don't know that I can follow my dear friend, for Tim Brand. Um, but let me say in conclusion that um there's been a lot of talk over the last year, six months about legacy. The word legacy has gotten damaged about a little bit. Um, so I'd like to talk a little bit about our shared legacy as a group. This group that's been together for a while. You know, we have been the heart and truth of a grand coalition in this city. Uh, and as a result of the efforts of that coalition, uh hundreds of millions of dollars have been invested in downtown Florence, in our neighborhoods, uh in our parks, in hard infrastructure. Uh, and all buddy, while staying the lowest tax rate of any city, municipal city in the state. This group together has shared and tried and we've shared and tried. Um, but at each point, we've shared. That's been our real legacy. That will be our real legacy. In a climate where too often disagreement becomes hostility. And we've seen it played out all too dramatically on the national scene. Here, we have a group with vastly different background. Um, vastly different perspective. We have, as Councilwoman Willis points out, we've certainly disagreed. We've disagreed passion. Um, but as Lincoln said, that the passion may have strength. It has never broken the bonds of affection that bind us together. That, ladies and gentlemen, is our legacy as a town. And it's my earnest hope that it is a legacy that will be shared by our successors, Madam Mayor alike. To God's feet.
Thank you.
I'm not with that. I'm allowed to present you the gavel.
All right.